Put it on vibrate or silent. We appreciate you doing that. And we'll note that this meeting is being launched out of livestream and recorded. We always begin the meeting with the pledge of allegiance and then we have a moment of silence that we'd ask you to remain standing for. Last week, we received very, very sad news that one of our fellow employees passed away in an automobile accident in Ohio. John Colness. John was employed in our recycling and solid waste department. And I think, Dan, you may have made the comment that you never saw him in a bad mood. I think you said that.
Never was.
And he was. He was always a very, seemed to be in a nice mood, a very friendly man, a likable man. So our sympathy goes out to his family, his coworkers, and all of his friends. Please keep the Colness family in your prayers. With that, we'll have the pledge of allegiance and Commissioner Sanado, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We'll have a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Vanessa, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Sanado?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Bellboy?
Here. We do have a forum. We'll note for any visitors that might be here that we always have two opportunities for public comment. One in a few moments and one before we adjourn. You're welcome to speak both times or if you only want to talk once or if you just care to listen, that's all, that's all fine. And we do ask that your comments be related to county government matters and that if you can, try to limit your time to about five minutes. That's out of respect for people's schedules. We also set aside time for any row officers that have any business to transact with us, but today it appears that none of them do. None of them are here. They're not obligated to be here, but we always welcome them. So that takes us to public comment. I see some folks in the audience, but I think they're all on the agenda. Although, do any of you have any public comments at this time? Thank you all. Under fiscal and contractual in our packet, and if Debbie Wander is watching us, I'll have your packet for you upstairs, Debbie. We have the warrant registers dated April 8, 9, and 11. Gentlemen, I'll give you time. We'll come over and whenever you're ready, I could accept a motion for us to accept these documents.
I'll make the motion to accept the documents.
I'll second that motion. Thank you both. Gentlemen, do either of you have any questions about the warrant registers? If not, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Vanessa. Also in our packet are the minutes of the April 8, 2025 commissioners meeting. Once again, gentlemen, take the time you need. We'll look them over. Whenever you're ready, I could take a motion for us to adopt the minutes. I make a motion to adopt the minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. And if there are no questions, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. In our packet are some written communications. The first is from RAR Engineering Group, which is based here in Newcastle. They are writing on behalf of their client, which is Three Rivers Aggregate. And this pertains to the Old Ash Mine, which is a forty-one and a half acre sand and gravel surface mine on the properties of SWD PG LLC. The location of this site is south of McConaughey Road and west of Old Ash Road in Plain Grove Township. And the purpose of this correspondence is to let us know that RAR, on behalf of their client, intends to submit an application for a surface mine permit at this location. Says here, the permit is, area is being permitted to include sand and gravel surface mining activities as well as including mining beneath the water table. This application is going to DEP. They will have the oversight authority of this. Secondly, from Gateway Engineers out of Butler. They're giving the county notification that they plan to apply to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for an NPDES permit for, they listed here as the East Long Street Waterline Replacement Project. I suspect in looking at the map, that should read East Long Avenue down on the south side. Pennsylvania American Water Company intends to secure this permit. They plan to install new six and eight inch water line in this area along East, along East Long Avenue in the city of Newcastle. The final document we have is notifying us that Mr. James Cunningham, who resides at 648 Smith Road in Wilmington Township, has applied to the Department of Environmental Protection for the reissuance of an NPDES permit. That stands for National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit for sewage on that property in Wilmington Township. Gentlemen, any questions or concerns about these letters? If, if not, may I have a motion for us to accept them?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you both, gentlemen. If there are no other concerns, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Commissioner reports and comments. Mr. Kennedy, you're, you're up first today.
I don't have a whole lot, just that, you know, our thoughts and prayers are with the young man that fell through on Friday. Giving impact towards him and his family. Hopefully, that's a recovery. Thoughts and prayers out for that incident that happened. That's all I have.
Dan, thank you very much. Commissioner Sanado?
Yeah, I just echo Commissioner Kennedy's thoughts. I mean, Friday was a very bad day all the way around with Mr. Colness and the incident. The woods and, you know, it affected all of us, especially at the government center. Mr. Colness, I went to school with his sister and I knew him from up here. And as Dan Kennedy said, he was a true happy-go-lucky person, had good conversations. Especially at the conservation luncheon. So he's going to be greatly missed. I just want to talk about, just briefly, myself and Commissioner Bellboy got a chance to go to Lawrence County Career Technical School. I know Mr. Kennedy had to go, but at reservation. It was one of those days we had to split up our duties as officials. And, you know, I was just so impressed with the young students at the Career Technical. Like the lady I sat next to at New Art School, the young man is in business. He wore a suit and tie at the luncheon. He himself is a true professional. Just listening to some of the stories that day, there's a lot of great things going on up there with these students. Some are going to tech school, some are going to college. I mean, it's all over the map and every one of them is going to make a lot of money when they graduate because I think they're in the fields that there's such a need for. And I go back to the days we used to call it tech. And it's just evolved into something so critical for, for our infrastructure as far as, as we try, as we try to get jobs in the area. Because we actually have a shortage. We do have a labor shortage and many of those are the type of jobs that we're going to need to fill these jobs. I know that a lot of efforts are being made to bring facilities into Lawrence County. But we do need employees that's going to work in those trades. So just hats off to what's happening at the Career Technical School. That's pretty much it, Chairman.
Thank you very much. I thought you would mention the good lunch they serve us.
Ah, yes, I did. Mexican. It was a little, and I don't eat a whole lot of Mexican. Let me tell you, everything was homemade out there. It was pretty good. Six months ago, they had roast beef and mashed potatoes, desserts. That's another skill that they have up at the Career Technical. They know how to cook. I, you're correct, Chairman. I don't want to leave that cut out because that was one of the best parts of the lunches.
That's right. Thank you, Chris. Well, I'll note that the three of us did have a busy week last week. Last Tuesday, we were in Mercer County for the quarterly meeting of the West Central Draw Partnership Governing Board. Gave us a chance to work with our fellow commissioners up there. On Wednesday of last week, all three of us attended the monthly meeting of the County Planning Commission, which was held out in the borough of Bessemer at the Mohawk Coffee House. As Commissioner Sanada noted, on, on Thursday, he and I went to the C, the Career and Technical Center. Commissioner Kennedy represented us out at the Ag Preservation Board meeting. And then on Friday, Mr. Kennedy attended on our behalf, the Forward Lawrence Impact Breakfast. Sunday, now Mr. Sanada was unable to be there. He was out of town. But Mr. Kennedy and I attended Eagle Scout Ceremony up in New Wilmington Borough for a young lady from, from Paul Land named Laney Todd, who did a project at the Fayette Cemetery in Wilmington Township. She did a real nice project, but she worked closely with Mr. Kennedy on that. Let me also note that this Friday, the courthouse will be closed. That will be observance of, of Good Friday. And I should also note that unless I am mistaken, it looks like we will not be having a meeting on May 6th. Does that sound right, Vanessa? My, my colleagues, my colleagues each have some out of, out of the office commitments that day. And got to have two of us here to have a meeting. So we're going to have to cancel the, the May 6th Commissioner meeting. We'll, we'll work through that. That's all I have and appreciate both of your reports, gentlemen. We move on to new business and the first two items deal with our recycling and solid waste office. Mr. Zona, would you mind coming up front? Jerry Zona is our director of the recycling and solid waste office, which it's, we're one of the few in the, in the state where it's a, it's a two county jurisdiction. We have an agreement with the Mercer Commissioners. So Jerry and his staff cover both counties. I know the Mercer Commissioners think well of you. They always say nice things about you, Jerry. So you have the first one, I think we, I think we do this every year where you apply to DEP, which will, the application you're submitting will allow for reimbursement for a portion of salaries and expenses for your position, I believe. What number is this, Vanessa?
Seventy-six.
Seventy-six. That's the spirit. Jerry, would you like to fill us in on this, please?
Sure. You are correct in saying this is an annual grant application. It's a grant program that he makes available to counties to reimburse fifty percent of their, the site coordinator's salaries, benefits, travel expenses, and things of that nature. So it's always nice to be able to have a program like this. We put in a lot of expenses and we get reimbursed for fifty percent. So.
Well, we appreciate your, thank you. You're staying on top of that for us, Jerry. I'm going to see if Commissioner Sanada has any questions. No. Thank you, sir. Mr. Kennedy?
I'll be greedy, but does Mercer County apply for this and get your other half of your salary?
Well, actually, Megan is our site coordinator for Mercer County, so that's where.
So you can do it. Thank you very much, Jerry. We appreciate it.
We do whatever we can.
Thank you. Good question and equally good answer. So thank you. This is Resolution 76. Gentlemen, if there are no other questions for Mr. Zona, may I have a motion to allow us to adopt this?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you both. And once again, if we have no other questions, we'll ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Then proposed Resolution 77. And I'm guessing this is something new, Jerry. You're asking for the authorization for the county partner with Tri-County Cleanways on an undertaking known as the Greatest American Cleanup in preparation for the country's 250th anniversary on July 4, 2026. So can you give us some detail on this, please?
Yeah, so this is, of course, you know, the country's preparing for the 250th anniversary. Lawrence County has already signed on as, as a partner for that, for activities here in Pennsylvania. And Keep, Keep America Beautiful, the national organization is on top of this. And their local, their state affiliate is Keep Pennsylvania Beautiful. It's the former PA Cleanways. Is going to activities here in Pennsylvania. So Tri-County Cleanways is the local affiliate of Keep Pennsylvania Beautiful. And is partnering up to try and, you know, be a part of the Greatest American Cleanup. This is a Keep American Beautiful program. They're trying to pick up twenty-five billion pieces of litter before the 250th anniversary of, of the country here. And we are, we want to sign on board and do our part. We actually have a kickoff event for this plan for April 26th. It's going to be a cleanup in Newcastle on the west side. We're expecting a very big volunteer turnout. And the last time we did this, in 2021, we had at least seventy, eighty volunteers show up. So we want to really kick the whole thing off with, with that particular program.
Jerry, I appreciate your bringing this, this to our attention. When I hear about the 250th, the first person I think of, and I'm hoping that you know her and maybe have dealt with her, is Jenny Jacob Kalaala, who is our local chair of, of the 250th Organization. And have you had interaction, have you talked to her about this so far along?
I have not. We have one of her signs in our office.
Okay. So do you, do you know her?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So I'm, I'm thinking if you, next time you see her, maybe you could make her aware of this. I'm sure she'll appreciate it. So I'll see if Commissioner Kennedy has questions. Thank you, Dan. Mr. Sanada? Okay. Well, would one of you wish to make a motion to, to adopt this so Jerry could move forward?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you both. If there are no other questions, we'll ask Vanessa to call the roll.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Jerry, thank you, sir. Always a pleasure. You take care. Next on our agenda, we have Scott Baldwin, the Director of our Mental Health and Developmental Services Office. Scott, nice to see you.
Morning.
Thanks for joining us. As I'm, as I'm reading this, it looks as though we are amending an existing agreement with BHC Advanced Services, Inc. I hope I have that part of it right.
You do.
But I'm going to stop there. Could you, could you give us some of the background on this, please?
So BHC Advanced is the Mercer County Mental Health Office. And they receive federal, our forensic funds from the state. And they distribute them to various counties in the western region. We don't get this money directly from the state. And we've been receiving dollars from them this fiscal year to the tune of $160,045. They had dollars that other counties weren't using. So they offered additional funds and we requested more dollars and received them. So we're here today to say we're thankful to get an additional $42,719 that we will expense to various mental health forensic initiatives for the county. So this is good. So just adjusting the, the original amount.
I'll, I'll make a prediction. I don't think you're going to get any no votes in my prediction. But that being said, Commissioner Sanada, questions for, for Scott?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy, nothing. Just thanks, Scott. Yep. Joe, you're, you're up to speed on all this?
Absolutely, yes.
Music to our ears.
I'll be back soon to adjust contracts so we can get dollars out to different providers. I'm sure I'll see you here in the next few weeks.
That'll be just fine. We appreciate that. Scott, thanks for bringing this to us. And if there are no other questions, let me see if one of my colleagues would wish to make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. Thank you. Thank you both, gentlemen. And if there are no other concerns, we'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Scott, thank you so much.
Thank you, David.
Wish, wish you a real good day. Incidentally, I, I did neglect to note one thing and it's kind of a good segue since Diane is next and she deals with economic development. I was at a meeting over the weekend out at Moraine State Park. They had a, a session for people who, they had a showcase of various organizations that are volunteer-type organizations that deal with both Moraine and McConnell's Mill. And one of the employees of DCNR made the comment that they estimate that on a yearly basis, McConnell's Mill State Park gets at least a quarter of a million visitors. Two hundred and fifty thousand visitors in a given year. And granted, they're, they're spending their time at the park, but I have a hunch we're seeing some, an effect from that economically. So I, that number stuck with me and I just wanted to, I meant to do that during the comments, but I, I forgot. So, but Diana reminded me. So anyhow, proposed Resolution 79 comes to us from the Lawrence County Economic Development Corporation. And Diane Richardson is with us today. Thank you for coming up today, Diane. We appreciate it. This is an agreement relative to the work that's taking place at the Stonecrest multi-tenant facility down in New Beaver Borough off of State Route 18. This is phase two. And this pertains to the RCAP agreement, the money that was granted from the Budget Office of the Commonwealth. We've all been working closely on this, but I know Mr. Kennedy in his role as our lead representative to Forward Lawrence, he's been very active in this, but this continues to be good news for us. So I'll let you fill us in on the details, if you would.
Sure. Just a little bit of background. This is actually the second RCAP award for this project. We received $500,000 in the past and this is again another $500,000 grant. The first grant was used for site work specific to Lot 2. And that park, there's actually four subdivided lots there. And this is earmarked for helping fund the water lines and that's throughout the whole park. And that project is almost complete. It's being done in potential with PA American Water. That would be a million dollar project. Again, RCAP's funding half of that. A little bit of background, that park is about 205 total acres. It's in the Mohawk School District. We expect big things from that park. And I know that Commissioner Kennedy is working with Ben Bush on some big projects hopefully coming to fruition. Could be a total of one foot five length square feet when the total park is filled out. And the site work part of it alone is twelve and a half billion dollars. So we appreciate the past support and we're asking for this quote once again for the county.
I'll make one more prediction. I don't think you'll have any no votes again. This is certainly good news for the county. As you mentioned, it's good news for the Mohawk Area School District and particularly for the borough of New Beaver. And we appreciate the efforts of yourself and Mr. Bush and your colleagues at Forward Lawrence. Let me see if Mr. Kennedy has any questions or comments.
No, the only comment I got was I should cut to talk to John McCarty the other day and then develop this. I said, hey, will you fill this one up? You're moving on up the road. He said, we'll talk. So he's not going anywhere, but we just thank him for what he's doing down there. Thank Diane for what they do every day.
Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Sanada, I just drove past there the other day. It's just amazing how a golf course turned into this economic development site. You would never know there was a golf course there. Seeing the, just about the water and the sewer, I mean, it's just amazing the work that's being done down there, how quickly. So when you want to do something and these earth movers get it done, but you would never know it was a golf course just looking away. It hasn't been that long, right, Diane?
2021, when this project began.
No, wait, we broke the, we cut the ribbon there. That was last groundbreaking and that wasn't even a year, right?
Because you gentlemen were there.
We were there, that's what I'm saying. So to see, to see all the stuff that happened from that within the year is just amazing. So we appreciate all the efforts Forward Lawrence and the Economic Development Corporation. I know Commissioner Kennedy spends a lot of time specifically on this project on our behalf. So we appreciate his efforts. That's it.
Thank you, Chris. You know, and it, it sometimes gets overlooked, but in that vicinity, along that corridor, which again is in New Beaver, there are a good number of businesses right in that area. The largest being the Pennsylvania American Water Company's treatment facility, which you cannot see from the road. It's there and it's huge. It's immense. And, and there are a number of other small businesses that have developed along that, that corridor. You know, we talked about the former golf course and that across the road used to be a drive-in theater, Super 18. And there are some businesses located there now that have gone up. So we're, again, we're very happy to see this happen. And it's been good news for the county, for Mohawk schools, and for the borough of New Beaver. So Diane, thank you. This is Resolution 39. Could I have a motion? I'm sorry, 79, excuse me, 79.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you, gentlemen. If there are no other questions, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Diane, it's great to see you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Diane.
And thank you for joining us. You're welcome to stick around, but if you have to head down, we understand.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you.
Take care, Diane. Yep. Proposed Resolution 80 is a budget amendment coming to us from the Assessment Office. There was unanticipated revenue of $20,410. It's coming in as appraisement revenue. And we're applying these dollars to the Professional Appraisement General Expense Fund Account. This, this deals with both the appraisals of the Elwood City Hospital in the, in the borough of Elwood City, I should say, the former Elwood City Hospital, and Lightner Green Facility in the Shannick Township. I'm going to take a guess here. I'm assuming is, to your knowledge, is this revenue that has come in from the other two taxing bodies? To help pay for the appraisement, appraisal? Okay, okay. Thank you. Let me see if Mr. Sanada has any questions.
No.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Dan, anything? All right, thank you. This is Resolution 80. Now I have a motion, please.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. MHDS, Mental Health Developmental Services, is noting that they have received unanticipated revenue of $42,719 coming in under their forensic services revenue fund line item. They are asking that that same amount be applied to their community services expense fund line item. Joe, anything else we need to help with?
That's what Scott had just presented to us. That was the increase in the profit dollars coming from the state.
Great. He didn't waste any time, did he?
No, he didn't.
That's great. Dan, any questions?
None.
No, Chris?
No.
Okay. May I have a motion for proposed Resolution 81?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you, gentlemen. And we'll ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then Resolution 82. The Voters Office, Voter Services Office is asking for a $2,400 transfer to come from the Commissioners contingency into that of the line item of maintenance and repairs for voter services. This is to cover expenses for direct image invoices. Mr. Sanada, any questions?
No.
Mr. Kennedy, nothing? And may I have a motion? Anything else, Joe, on this one?
No.
Okay. May I have a motion for this proposal, please? I make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellboy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have five transfer requests. I'm going to read them. Stop me, please, if you have any questions. And then when we're done, if you'd like, we can questions, and then when we're done, if you'd like, we can maybe take them as a group. The Maintenance Department is asking for a $2,700 transfer from their contingency into the Minor Equipment line item. That will allow them to purchase a, uh, lawnmower at the, our Public Safety Facility out in Pickory Township. Uh, the Assessment Office is requesting a $1,090 transfer from their, uh, contingency into that of the Professional Appraisement, uh, line item. The Central Court Office is asking for a $100 transfer from their contingency into their Subscription line item. The Coroner's Office requests a $6,000 transfer from their contingency into, uh, land and building rental line item. And then, uh, District Judge Cartwright's Office is requesting a $960 transfer from their contingency into Equipment and Lease Rental line item. Uh, Chris, any questions?
No.
Uh, Dan, anything?
No, no questions.
Okay, thank you. And Joe, anything we need to know or?
No, sir.
May I have a motion for the approval of these transfer requests?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Thank you both, we'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Sanado?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bellar?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Vanessa. Under announcements, uh, this board will reconvene one week from today, April 22, at 10:00 AM in this room, it will be open to the public. As we noted earlier, the courthouse will be closed on this, this coming Friday, April 18, in observance of, of Good Friday. And we noted earlier, but I think it, it's worth repeating, that in the month of May, uh, we're actually gonna only have two meetings in the month of May. As noted previously, on May 6th, my two colleagues have, uh, out of the office commitments, so we will not meet that day. We will meet on May 13th. May 20th is Primary Election Day and traditionally the courthouse is open, but we generally don't have, uh, commissioner meetings on Election Day. And then we'll, we'll come back in on, uh, May 27th. There are no members of the public in the audience at this time, but I'll see if my colleagues have closing comments or questions. Mr. Kennedy? No. Thank you. Mr. Sanada?
Uh, just one quick comment, you brought up the water company facility in New Beaver Borough, uh, and I had the opportunity to tour that last, last year. It's amazing there, I, I would have never guessed, you know, uh, look down and see the, that, that's like looking at the center of the earth.
Yeah.
It was just a sight to see and, uh, did you see that, Commissioner Kennedy?
No, I, uh, yeah.
That's all you're asked of things to do, and you were.
Yeah, me and I were gonna go down there sometime.
Yeah, and you were on sick leave at the time, but I, it was, it's something I, I recommended, I know Chairman Bowler, you, you kept saying to go see it, so I just redrawn my memory when you brought that up, so, uh, appreciate that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ed. Boy, if you, you could throw a stone in the Beaver County facility, so thank goodness they located the art town, we appreciate that. Uh, Joe or Vanessa, anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you both. Well, we wish everyone, uh, a joyous Easter weekend and, uh, all of your families and loved ones and, uh, there being no other business to be brought before the board today. May I have an adjournment motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.